Okay, good evening to you all. I'm Mayor Ken Marshburn and tonight is a regular council meeting, December 6th. And we have some special things to happen this evening, but before we get to that, we'll follow our normal agenda. And I'll begin by asking the town clerk, if she will, to do the roll call.
Marshburn?
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Vance?
Here.
Thank you so much. And I will recognize at this time, Councilmember Dellinger, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and also afterwards, the invocation, if you can stand, we invite you to do so.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Please bow your heads as you wish. Thank you, Lord, for this night to serve, this wonderful community we love so much. Please grant us the wisdom to do the things in the best interest of this town and the fortitude to make the decisions to defend it. Thank you also for the presence of so many family and friends here for the swearing-in of Councilmember Singleton and Councilmember Behringer. Thank you for their safe travels. Please bless everyone with continued health. And thank you so much. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dellinger. Tonight, before we get to some swearing-ins, we need to take some action. And the first action would be the certification of the 2021 municipal election and bond results. And I might just add that the mayor and his council is appreciative to the citizens of the town of Garner for approving all four of our bond issues. And so the first order of business is for the council to certify or acknowledge certification of the municipal election and bond results. And that can be done by adopting Resolution 2021-2473. Councilmembers, you have that information before you, so at this time, a motion would be in order to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt Resolution 2021-2473, certification of the municipal elections of 2021.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Vance. All right. Thank you very much. All in favor of adopting the resolution, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And of course, there is no opposition. And so, thank you very much. All right, now, we will get to some very important business. I want to recognize, many of you know Judge Monica Bowesman, who is here with us this evening to conduct our swearing-in ceremony for two of our council members. So Judge Bowesman, thank you for taking your time to come out and take care of this important business. And Mr. Singleton and Ms. Behringer, if you will, you can go forward, I believe, at this time. And Ms. Bowesman, were you planning for them to come down there, I believe?
Behringer, you go ahead, first. You go ahead.
Okay. If you have a family member or someone you want to assist or hold the Bible, you can feel free to do that as well.
Do you, Kathy Long Behringer, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as council member, so help you God?
I will.
So I was gonna, at the end of both of them, give a chance for some pictures to be made, if anybody wants to make pictures. So while you're already down there, if you'd like to take some pictures with your family members.
Have I ever introduced your family?
Yeah. Please. Feel free to take a minute to introduce them all.
This is only half my family, so. But you guys have supported me all along the way. My husband Jeff, I've been behind me, and I love him a lot, listen to him a lot, and they still love him. My daughter Montclair and my son Chad, my son Sam, my son Zach, he's Mike Lewis, and my two grandchildren, Zoe and Reed, and I don't say this is how we got along, some of the others went out today. But thank you all for being here tonight. Sam brought me yourself.
(inaudible)
So to get everybody set, I think we need all come like a step over this way.
Ms. Behringer, if you want to make any other comments while you're down there, we have a minute or two, but perhaps you've already...
I'd just like to say that it is my pleasure to serve on the council for 16 years. I would call it the next four years.
Get the microphone.
There will be a lot of challenges and opportunities. Garner is growing, and that's not going to stop. And our job is to direct the growth so that Garner benefits the most and the citizens of this town have a good quality of life.
Thank you very much. And yeah. Mr. Singleton will be next. Do we need to delay just a little more, Ms. Singleton? We can wait a minute?
Would it be possible just to...
I follow instructions very well. Okay, all right. Place your left down the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you, John Graham Singleton Jr., solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as council member, so help you God?
I will, and I do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We will ask Mr. Singleton to introduce his family. And any other comments?
Yes, this is my wife Tracy, our youngest daughter Emma, our son Harrison, obviously he's got a loss coming here. Our oldest daughter Rachel, her husband Connor cannot be here tonight, they're in Raleigh, maybe watching live on Facebook. Been doing this, started doing this before I had kids. Our oldest is 26 now, so I started this 28 years ago. So this is all my kids have known, have been in public service and trying to make Garner a great, the great, it already is a great place, but maybe even a better place in the future. So without their sacrifices, I'm not allowed to do this. Because when I'm at meetings and the kids are little, guess who's at home with them? Tracy. So I appreciate their support. This is the first time. Also, two of my kids got, no, one of the kids got to vote for me. Two of my kids have gotten voted for me. Emma's too young, but they all got to work at the polls, which was a first. I can't challenge the Behringer busload here with six kids. I can't get that many kids. But I appreciate serving Garner, love Garner, and like Kathy said, it's a lot of challenges today and be more challenges in the future.
Okay, ready to call?
Could you do one picture?
Yeah, let's do that.
And congratulations to Councilmember Behringer and Councilmember Singleton. We appreciate your service already and look forward to your continued service for the good town of Garner. Our first order of business by town policy is after the swearing-in of re-elected council members is the election of a mayor pro tem. Mayor pro tem is someone selected by the council to serve in this capacity. And I won't read all the items related to that, but the mayor pro tem fills in when the mayor is not available and takes care of other matters when the mayor may not be available to attend to certain things. And so tonight, we will ask the council to select our next mayor pro tem. And so at this point in time, I'm going to open the nomination process for the next mayor pro tem, for the next two years at least, anyway.
Mayor, I'll move that we select Councilmember Elmo Vance to serve as the mayor pro tem.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Singleton. And there's been a second for that. I think we could allow for other nominations, but are there any? Okay, Mr. Vance, we will now ask the council to formally vote, since your name is only one placed in nomination. So all council members who favor the selection of Mr. Vance for serving as our mayor pro tem, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, no. So congratulations, sir. Look forward to working with you in this capacity, and we'll work through this together, okay? I'll be meeting with you sometime soon, and we'll chat some. Congratulations to you, sir. Anything you care to say?
Well, I'll just say thank you to my fellow council members, and I will do the best that I can. It is a humbling experience to be chosen, and I'll just, I will do the best I can. I know I'm following a tough act with Councilwoman Behringer, but I know that she will provide what wisdom and knowledge that she has to support me in the role. Thank you again.
I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I think as part of the process here, we have to, have you sworn to an oath of office? So Judge Bowesman has been gracious enough to stick around to take care of this item, so if you will report to the front, sir. I have to... Sir.
Do you keep your mask on or off? Mask on or off?
Sorry.
You can take it off if you want.
Yeah, I think you, yeah.
Do you, Elmo Vance, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as mayor pro tem, so help you God?
I will.
Okay, congratulations.
Might want to get a picture.
Vance, don't forget to ask the mayor about the extra stipend that you get.
Okay, thank you, and again, congratulations to you both. And thank you, Judge Bowesman, for coming out and doing the honors for us tonight. We deeply appreciate that. Anything further you care to say before you leave?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks very much. Goodbye. All right, we will now move into our regular agenda, and the first part of that is a section called petitions and comments. This is a portion of the meeting, and we receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda. Citizens ideally should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to start of the meeting. The board is interested in hearing your comments, but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. So, Madam Clerk, were there any persons who signed up to speak at this time?
(inaudible).
Okay. Ordinarily, I give members of those of you who are present, if you desire to speak, make a comment, and you failed to sign up, I will allow that at this time. Are there any persons who desire to do that? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move forward at this time. Presentations is the next item of business, but I'm not aware of any to take place. Are you, Madam Clerk? Okay. Okay, council members...
Mr. Mayor, adoption of the agenda?
I'm sorry?
Need to adopt the agenda?
Yes, I'm sorry, you're exactly right. I was trying to get to the consent agenda. Thank you. Item H is the adoption of the agenda, and you have that before you. I believe I'm informed that in addition to the printed copy or the information you have on your computer, that there's a work, excuse me, a closed session requested for this evening. Am I right, Ms. Attorney?
Yes, that's correct. Staff is requesting a closed session to discuss real estate under the authority of North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A5.
Okay, thank you so much. So council members, you've heard that requested as an addition to the agenda. So with that noted, I will entertain a motion that the agenda be adopted.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. All in favor, please vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. I was getting ahead of myself, so we very good. Presentations, I believe, there are none. The next item is a consent agenda. There are four items, I believe, on the consent agenda this evening, council members. And so unless anyone desires to pull an item, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Move. Seconded.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance and Mr. Matthew, you're seconded. So all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no opposition, and it's so ordered. Okay, no public hearings this evening. We will go to our new and old business, and the first item there is the conditional zoning amendment with master plan, CZPD 2102. I believe Mr. Trezenberg and Mr. Banford will be presenting as part of our town staff presentation, and then we will hear from others as appropriate. So, Mr. Banford, I will recognize you at this time for this item.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is a conditional rezoning request. This is a, the case number CZPD for plan development 20-02. And this case has gone to a public hearing and also the Planning Commission. This specific request is to rezone approximately 8.6 acres from a single-family R12 and also approximately 63.8 acres from a single-family R40, a total of 72.2 acres to planned residential development conditional use District 12 for the development of a single-family subdivision of 170 lots at a density of around 2.4 units per acre. And this development will have three lot sizes. The county map of the rezoning site, the boundary is outlined in brown or orange. The R12 portion of the site is currently annexed. That was annexed as part of the Everwood subdivision, and that was approved years ago. The remaining portion outside of the town limits is Zone R40. There are several neighborhoods in the area. There's Everwood to the south, South Creek directly over to the... There's Everwood to the south, South Creek directly over to the west on the other side of a vacant tract, I'm sorry, down here to the, I guess, southwest. We also have some subdivisions to the north, Hillendale, also, I think, Fox Walk and some lots along Fox Trap. And these were all, these neighborhoods are on well and septic, so they were developed under the county's jurisdiction years ago. So, the lot sizes out there are much larger. We do have some neighborhoods to the southeast along Ackerman Road, and all those are inside the town limits. So, the zoning, the current zoning in this area, the site, again, is, has split zoning between R12, about eight acres, and the remaining portion, R40. The single-family neighborhoods directly in the vicinity, inside the town limits, are R12. We also have a planned residential development to the southeast, Bingham Station, that is a planned residential development. To the south, near the intersection of Ackerman and Bryan Road, we have Grove at White Oak that originally was proposed, originally approved under the name Rora subdivision, and that was renamed to Grove at White Oak. So, the areas that are outside of the town limits are Zone R40 and R20, and the annexed areas have a higher density zoning, R12, R9, or PRD. This is a list of the neighborhoods in the area and also their densities and average lot sizes. So, the areas that are currently inside the town limits that are annexed or developed at a higher density, Everwood at 1.56 units per acre, Bingham Station at around 2.98 units per acre, Tunbridge, 1.84, Lenwood Estates, 2.4 units per acre, Grove at White Oak, 2.21, Ridge Moore, which is also a planned residential development on Ackerman Road at 2.6. The neighborhoods outside the town limits in the ETJ, Hillendale, .81 units per acre, Foxhaven, .68 units per acre, and Hillendale Oaks at .67 units per acre. And those lots vary from like one acre to over four acres. We have a long zoning history in this area of Garner going back to 1990. South Creek was rezoned in 1990, and this is a subdivision to the west. The most recent rezoning was Grove at White Oak in 2018 in this immediate vicinity. The next map shows the rezoning cases. Up here, we have Evolve at Timber Creek. This is a multifamily apartment project that was rezoned in 2016. South Creek was rezoned in 1990. Everwood was rezoned in 2004. Lenwood Estates was rezoned in 2006. Tunbridge was rezoned in 2006. Bingham Station was rezoned in 2004. Ridge Moore was rezoned in 2017. Glen, let's see, Grove, let's see. Clifford Glen was rezoned in 2017. Sutton Springs was rezoned in 2018. Glen's at Bethel was rezoned in 2004. So, we have a lot of rezonings in this area of Garner over the last 20 years or so. And this is a summary of the existing zoning. A total acreage of 72.2 acres. 63.87 acres are zoned R40, which is agricultural district, which allows single-family modular double-wide manufactured homes, schools, churches, telecommunication towers, solar farms, civic lodges, parks. Minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. Approximately 8.68 acres is currently zoned R12, and permissible uses under R12 is single-family modular cluster development, schools, churches, community centers, with a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet. This is a conditional request, so the applicant has proposed a list of conditions for the project. First is the list of permissible uses. So, the use will be restricted to single-family detached only. So, no townhomes or any multifamily uses would be permissible, just single-family detached. Next several slides will go through the zoning conditions. The density shall not exceed 2.4 units per acre. Number three, deviations from the lot sizes are proposed for this project, and since the deviations exceed, I believe, 20%, that this will require a specific finding of the town council regarding acceptability. Three different lot sizes are proposed, between 55 to 65 units at 7,200 square feet, between 70 to 80 units or lots at 9,000 square feet, and between 30 to 40 lots or units at 12,000 square feet, with a total of 170. Deviations are requested for also the building setbacks. So, since planning commission, there has been some modification. When this went to planning commission, the R9, let's see, I'm sorry, the R12, and I think the 7,200 square foot lots all had a six, let's see, five feet minimum and 10 foot combined request. Now, the applicant has broken it out to the 9,000 and 12,000 square foot lots would have a setback, a side yard setback at six feet minimum, 15 feet combined, and the 7,200 square foot lots would have a five feet minimum, 10 foot combined. So, this is a little different than what was at planning commission. The complete list of zoning conditions are in your staff report. These are the highlights. No vinyl siding will be permissible. Construction will be on a crawl space construction, no slab on grade. A 25-foot setback with extra landscaping would be provided adjacent to the existing An inch overhang will be required on the individual units. 2,400 heta square feet minimum is proposed. Side windows with shutters are proposed. Two-car garage minimums with decorative hardware on the doors. Greenway construction, a quarter mile would be public and 1.25 miles would be private. Each home will have at least a 100 square foot minimum of a sunroom, deck, patio, or a screen porch. A 2,000 square foot minimum pole will be provided. A kids' pole of 500 square feet minimum will be provided, and a clubhouse of 2,000 square feet minimum would be provided. The tree, the minimum tree save area on the site will be 14%. Also proposed is a sidewalk connection from Mahler's Creek entrance to the Everwood subdivision along Bryan Road. Traffic calming to be installed at the two proposed interior connections. There was an additional neighborhood group meeting held on September the 22nd, and this was to discuss the concerns about drainage along the north, northern edge of Everwood subdivision. So, this is in addition to the required neighborhood meeting.
I don't want to rehash everything, but we do want to focus on what was mostly the discussion during planning commission meeting as well as a public hearing. So, just to recap, from the traffic impact analysis, some of the requirements from DOT were to modify the signal at Timber and White Oak for better through movement of traffic, dedicated left turns and right tapers along Bryan Road into the subdivision. The developer, and also, there was a recommendation to, for a right turn lane here. In discussing with DOT, there were some right-of-way constrictions there, and so initially, there was just a recommendation from DOT for a taper, D cell only. In discussing the matters, staff talked with the applicant, and they agreed to either construct or pay the full fee in lieu of that dedicated right, so an actual dedicated lane with taper, and then also contribute a 5% payment towards the future traffic signal at Bryan and White Oak. Terms of access here, this receives some, a lot of discussion as well at planning commission. We did establish here that we do have a pinch point in the site, and that if it is blocked, Capertree Lane is the only access into and out of the back part of the subdivision, which where there are still more than 75 homes. We also just wanted to clarify some things with folks as far as how EMS currently works. For about the last decade now, they've been equipped with GPS, and as the day progresses, those units do flex. I've actually been told by somebody there that they actually spend less time in their home station than they do out and about, being shifted around the county. So, you never really know where an EMS vehicle will be responding from. It's not always the station. In fact, more often than not, it's somewhere else. But just for your reference, the two closest stations are not much different in terms of distance, is Timber Drive and then also the fire station out at Rayner Road, which could either come in off of White Oak and Ackerman or go around on 70 and back down south through there. So, again, just to recap, some of the general information, David went over this, and he did note on the setbacks that those have been modified since planning commission. Basically, in that slide that he was showing you, it used to be that the proposal was for all of the homes to fall in that right column that was highlighted in yellow. After discussing things after planning commission, the applicant agreed to pull the 12,000 and the 9,000 square foot lots back out of that and created a different column for those, so they were, would be meeting more of the traditional setback requirements. So, that was that change there. Again, here is the overall master plan with public greenway here along Mahler's Creek, your larger lots here in the back of the subdivision, the red being your 12,000 square foot lots, the blue being the 9,000, and the yellow being the 7,200. We have an amenity center kind of up here in the northeast corner, as well as walking trails throughout, the open spaces that would also connect to the public greenway, and of course, in many places, sidewalks and side path upgrades as well. Just as a reminder, at that public hearing, we shared this with the planning commission, that you all had asked about, again, the size of the proposed lots backing up particularly to Everwood and Foxhaven, whether or not there would be grading in that 25-foot setback. There was the flooding concerns on Twin Berry Lane, which that additional meeting that they held with some residents addressed to a degree. The applicant can tell you more about that. The town's long-range plan, we discussed about Ackerman getting over to Highway 50, and if, whether or not the increased density was the reason for the second access. Again, we also heard public comments, and these really didn't much change at the planning commission, but again, more traffic on Bryan. The big one, no signal at Bryan and White Oak. Internal road connectivity questions, as, again, as to why that was required. Lot size dimensions and the variations going with them, the grading drainage behind Twin Berry. There was some question of the timing of the traffic count collection that was addressed. And we also talked about locations of the entrances and the fact that there was also not anything about a dedicated left at Tallowood, which is the main entrance into Everwood. So, at the planning commission meeting, we did talk about the consistency as required by state statute. We did determine that the request is technically inconsistent. However, the medium density residential category does call attention to context. Because there are lower-density neighborhoods like Fox Haven in the area, we do believe that the context supports the amendment to actually make this low-density residential as opposed to medium density. However, the single-family proposed use is consistent. In terms of the transportation plans, they are doing what is required as far as widening Bryan Road and the multimodal improvements that go along with that. So, it has been found to be in conformance with those plans for future widening. Parks, recreation, greenways, and cultural resources, this is not in a designated parkland area. However, there is the greenway path along the western side, along Mahler's Creek. They have incorporated that into their proposal, so therefore, we've also found it consistent with that plan. And so, in their deliberations and unanimous vote, they did adopt the statement that we drafted for them about plan consistency, which addressed the recommendation to actually lower the comprehensive plan designation from medium density to low density. But as part of their unanimous vote, in their discussion after the motion was made, there was an amendment that, as part of their recommendation, they felt that the deviation of the 7,200 square foot lots be removed. There was not really time to discuss that, but we did note that as part of, as part of their recommendation to you. Staff did address some reasons why we feel that may not necessarily accomplish the best, best of interest for Garner. So, if you have any questions about that, we'll be happy to answer those. And then, as far as reasonableness tonight, this is your action meeting, where you are asked to then also approve a statement regarding plan consistency, which we've kind of addressed, I think, with the previous notes about medium density to low-density residential. And so, we do have our recommendation that CZPD 2002, as presented and reflected in sections three and five of the staff report, that we support that, and we recommend town council approval of the planning commission's statement of consistency, and further recommend approval of the zoning amendment request as a reasonable one. We have highlighted our recommendation for you in that motion worksheet. The applicant, I know, is here to address, and I think would like to even present some of what has transpired since the public hearing. I know Mr. Overcash is here, the, their transportation engineer, as well as Mr. Barta, who is the owner, and Ms. Porter, who is the land site designer. So, we'd be glad to answer any questions that you have of us right now. As noted, the applicant is here, and I believe they would like to make a presentation as well, and we'll take it from there, if that's okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Treesenberg, and also Mr. Banford. And yeah, we will let council, at this point, present any questions they might have. I'll start down here with Mr. Vance, if he has any.
Not at this moment, Mr. Mayor. You go around, I have one.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, anything?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Mr. Tallinger?
Yes, could you, could we go into condition five on the conditions? We glossed over the majority of them, and they were bullet pointed, but condition five.
Condition five on our agenda, right, Damon?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I got it.
In the, there's different information in what was done at a neighborhood meeting, where it says, "We decided to keep the setback with the saved trees to create screening between Mahler's Creek and Everwood that otherwise might have been there." Yet, in the planning commission meeting, and in our public hearing, they're going to grade, which also means tear down all the trees in that setback. And condition five seems to say also, that's what they're going to do. And condition five seems to say also, that's what they're gonna do. So I want to be very clear on what the plan is for that section of the development.
So I believe five and six kind of go together. As I understand it, there is not necessarily always vegetation in the setback. So they wanted to be able to grade in those areas, preserving as much as they, as they can within there. And then depending on whether or not, well, regardless of whether that existing, any existing vegetation is infringed upon, no matter what, they are agreeing to propose that, um, at minimum planting a four-foot basically evergreen hedge. Um, that would consist of any one of those species listed in number six. And at Planning Commission, they also agreed with Mr. Blasco's recommendation um, to not have a monoculture, but to change up the plant species, um, every, every so often. I believe it was every six plants. But no matter what, there will be a evergreen hedge at four feet that will grow to at least six feet, uh, within the first couple of years.
And it's clear that the, right now in the setback, there are seventy-foot tall trees.
Right.
Twenty-five feet deep. So they're gonna knock those down and replace them with four-foot evergreens.
Again, I believe where they're proposing, I don't know, Pam, do you wanna address that a little bit more? If you can, that would be great, just so I can understand and whether or not we need to make some clarifications.
Sure. So, uh, Pam Porter with TMTLA Associates, um, I'm gonna try to explain this in, um, not confusing ways. So the intent is for us to, as, in, in the greatest extent possible, to leave vegetation in that twenty-five feet. And in most instances, the grading is kept out of it. There are a couple of instances where we may need to grade into that twenty-five feet to get some of the lots to work. But that's not gonna be an instance around the entire pro- property. Um, where we do have to remove plants, we're revegetating based on, um, yeah, a detail that has been created to replace those plants. Regardless of if we are grading or not grading, there will be, um, there's certain streets where the roads, um, the lots back up to our property where we've called out, there's gonna be a four-foot evergreen screen that's a hedge in addition to either the existing vegetation in that twenty-five feet or anything that we, we replant. So in addition to canopy trees and shrubs and understory trees, there will be that twenty, uh, that, uh, evergreen hedge with the four-foot evergreen trees that will grow to be six feet. And, um, the minimum required planting size in the UDO is three feet, but we're proposing a four-foot plant because it gives a more immediate screen in those areas.
I'm talking very specifically about the, this property and where it abuts the existing lots on Everwood. I don't care about all the rest of the, I'm talking about that very specifically. And I want to know what the plan is for that specific part.
Would it be helpful for them to specify which adjacent lots that they would need to grade into that twenty-five versus those that they would not?
Well, um, that's what I'm saying. At the public hearing, it was clear that they were gonna grade all the way to those property lines in Everwood, which meant getting rid of all of that. And, uh, some issue with that, one with the, it, the designation of this is a PRD zoning to begin with. One, because one of the four tenants of it are preservation of natural environment. Not replanting, but preservation of what's already there. And along with the not having increased density, I mean, that's what PRDs are for, is increasing density, not decreasing density. So again, another reason, it's just not the right zoning. I'm just very concerned about that one spot and it can't be a clear answer on that specific area. And, and the.
I mean, I think that's a fair question to ask and I'll ask them to take a closer look at their, at their plans to determine where that has to be and where it doesn't have to be.
I'm trying to find the condition of the street name, hold on. Twin Berry, are you talking about the lots that back up to Twin Berry or that are on Twin Berry that back up to?
The same lots that have the.
The drainage issue? Okay, okay, yep, Twin Berry. I just want to make sure I was saying the right street name. So, um, since we came before in public hearing, our engineer has done some actual engineering on the site. Um, there were some preliminary engineering done, but it was, um, not, not to the extent that we've developed since public hearing. So in that section, as of right now, there is no grading, on our side, there is no grading in that twenty-five feet. But the reason we have that condition built in is if perchance we have, have to grade in that twenty-five feet, which is a setback, it's not a buffer, it's a setback. We, we have the ability to do that and replant, but we're not gonna grade all the way to the property line. Cause cutting down big trees to plant little trees doesn't make a whole lot of sense, right? So what we're trying to do is preserve around the perimeter as much as we can. And we understand that, um, the folks that live in Everwood are really sensitive to this. So we don't want to grade to a property line in order to replant. That doesn't make any sense. So the best I can tell you now, since the, the site grading has started, is right now there is no grading in that twenty-five feet. We're still developing site plan. I don't think that's gonna change. But, um, you know, also being sensitive to the fact that those trees do help slow down any runoff. So grading to the property line does not help that either. So we're trying to be, um, cognizant of that as well. So right now, there is no grading planned in that twenty-five feet between the lots that have the drainage issue and then our property.
And it proved tonight, as is, the way the condition stands, it would be preserved that you, you could. I, I think it's very interesting that the conditions even in, in here. We can come back to it. I've got some traffic questions too.
Let me get, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll go back around. Mr. Singleton, I believe was gonna recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll go ahead and saddle up the big horse. That my biggest concern is, one, I will say, I had some extra party communication with Mr. Barta after the meeting in August. Can I ask him if he could have some of his, uh, stormwater engineer design folks do their best to meet with the residents on the, I believe the seven residents back there off Twin Berry. And, uh, I think they had onsite meeting and also some teams meetings and, uh, had determined that, when Everwood was originally built, there was a stream that wasn't marked correctly. And the water seeps up under the ground when they have too much water and that designing the subdivision exact, will, will help. It may not take the water away a hundred percent, but a quite, a sus- over half the water that's going on that site will no longer go on there. So I appreciate that and we can come back to that. My big concern is the intersection of Bryan Road and White Oak Road. I know that we look at the numbers and DOT says, well, they're, they can contribute to five percent of the cost cause it'll add five percent of the additional traffic count. Well, if we look at the list of rezonings that we've done in that area that, uh, Mr. Bamford showed us early, you got five percent in here, five percent there, five percent in here, five percent there. There's at least six five percents on there. And there's another one or two subdivisions complaining, I mean, uh, uh, not complaining, that may be, I think in-house with, with planning right now, that may or may not come before to us. So we've gone from, you know, increasing traffic in that area, not just on Bryan Road, but Bryan Road and White Oak. You know, you're talking about increasing five percent, five percent, five percent, five percent, five percent, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five percent. And DOT says it now warrants a signal. But to do it, they want to make sure that the traffic, excuse me, the lanes on the southbound and eastbound heading that way, on the western side of the intersection are improved to Timber Drive. Because if they don't, they fear when there's a light there at the busiest times, the traffic will go out onto Timber Drive. If you look at the twenty nineteen traffic counts at Timber Drive and White Oak Road, if you take it Highway seventy, Highway four oh one and I forty, that's the busiest intersection in Garner. It's over thirty thousand cars. Now, if you take it Highway seventy, seventy and White Oak's a little more than that, but if you, that intersection is over thirty thousand cars a day. Well, this is just right down the road from that. Now, true, Timber brings a lot of the traffic there. But we can't go and, you know, tell Johnston County to give us two, three million dollars to help fix this intersection cause that's not gonna happen for all the homes they approved. So my concern is, this, there's a tipping point. It's not just this subdivision, it's creating a safer driving environment for everyone. And when I was at the poll, one day, early voting, this nice lady from Everwood talked to me for twenty minutes and told me how long it took to get out here, there, and her concerns, she was very calm, just extremely nice. And something has gotta be done there. She said, whether you approve this subdivision or not, you have gotta fix that, that, that intersection. And I know what? I agree with her. So we're gonna have to have some, I know there's some conditions in here stated, uh, about an improvement on the lane and contributing five percent here and so forth. The town of Garner is gonna have to take serious look in making the improvements. If it's just on the westbound side, on the southbound and eastbound lanes, to making that intersection improved. Because we've approved all these other houses and subdivisions and the traffic's not going away. And that doesn't include what is south of us, that the county, Wake County or Johnston County have approved. This has gotta be addressed and this is the tipping point. I'll say this. Years ago, we needed to stop light at Jessup Drive and Highway seventy in Garner. And one of our state senators, Leonard Coleman, got some state spot funding safety. We got the money. Two weeks before they were gonna install it, a gentleman I had known and worked, waited on many years, I worked, the husband's hardware was killed at that intersection. Two weeks before the light was put in. And I had never forgotten that. And, and he does not deserve to die that way. It did happen. But we don't need to have a, a statistic out here at Bryan Road and White Oak Ray's saying, well, okay, now we'll put the light in cause somebody got killed there. We need to address it. It's just, again, this is just a tipping point. It's just, it's brought so much attention to that area now with all the other subdivisions that we have got to address that intersection. Because when, when the school bus drivers called out on Wake County and parents had to come, the people who went to farm there, I know, known all my life. The parents picked them up and the cars were backed up past their house, going down toward this, and that, this didn't happen. Took them over an hour for the cars to get out and turn left or right. Cause there were so many of them, because the buses weren't there. And we, we can't put people in that kind of predicament. I'll be quiet. I've gotten on my horse. I'll saddle up again next time around.
I'll go to Ms. Behringer at this point.
Well, I have to say that like Mr. Singleton, my biggest concern is that intersection and the need for the traffic light and for the intersection to be improved to the point where it's truly safe. I happen to know the family that Mr. Singleton was talking about who lost their husband, father, grandfather to at Jessup Drive. And it was, uh, it was just devastating that that happened and not necessary. I, I'd like us to explore how we can move forward. If DOT has said that there is a stoplight warranted, that's, that's a step further down the road than we usually are at this point with them. So what can we do next to find out? What can we do next? What's our, what's our next step to, to move that along so that we can get in line with their plans and get it done? That, that area's gonna develop, though. We can't stop that. But we need to make sure it's safe.
Okay, I'll give a chance for any response and then I'll go give council another round. Oh, excuse me, well, yeah.
I didn't know if there's any updates on that light situation down there at this point, uh, if anything new had come in, maybe we weren't aware of.
I don't believe so. As, as part of the request, we did ask the applicant to do a specific signal warrant, you know, to formally document the signal warrant analysis there. It shows that existing conditions today trip the five volume warrants that exist. Um, so with or without this development, as you, as you noted, uh, the warrant is already there. So it's a, at this point, it's a, really a funding challenge. And as we've mentioned before, secondary roads don't get the traditional lines of funding at the DOT level. So it's either going to fall to more than likely bond monies or some kind of special earmark that somebody can work out. Because we're only, you know, we can only go so far as the discussions here amongst us allow us to go. Because otherwise, transportation improvements for a development have to have that rational nexus as to what they're being asked to do versus their impact. So, but the, but the warrants are there, the warrants are there. Now, the question is, is how do we?
Let me ask you this, if I may, cause I understand the seriousness of the safety, which, uh, Mr. Singleton's brought up as well as everybody else. And it's not only this development, it's so many others. We got a school down there and other things coming in. What is the, I got a two-part question. One is to put a signal in there right now to at least help that situation, uh, till the state can step up and do more. Is, what, what, what kind of cost are we talking about? And is this something we could do as a public-private type thing to make this thing happen?
I mean, I would probably have to defer to Mr. Overcash, who I understand did some preliminary design work potentially at what a solution might be. We did get a signal cost, just for the signal estimate at about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, just to put the signal in. But as far as the road improvements goes, I would have to defer, cause I have not seen any of that.
Good evening. Uh, Law Overcash with Kimblehorn Associates in Raleigh. Uh, we did do a cost estimate in the request of the town and we came up to about a hundred and forty-four thousand for a, uh, traffic signal at that location to signalize it as it sits today. So the five percent contribution was around seventy-two hundred.
Mr. Mr. Overcash, do you, do you have, mentioned a, a preliminary, uh, design of some of that intersection improvement? Do you have, is, I mean, is that available for us to see or look at, or is that something that's just what staff's got?
Yeah, uh, let me see. Does you have an answer for the question?
I think we're getting ready to see the answer right here.
Okay.
So when you're considering a traffic signal at the current location, when we, we, you know, like, we ran through the signal warrant analysis and as was mentioned previously, you know, the approved developments that we included in the traffic study were about thirty, thirty-five percent increase in traffic at this location over the existing volumes where our development with a hundred and seventy homes is about five percent. So that's a, it's a, you know, significant difference in what this development's contributing versus you add them all together and kind of, that's what the TIA kind of analyzes. So we did go back and, you, you know, if you signalize it as is today, the backups from the signal, because there are no turn lanes at that intersection, would extend back towards Timber and then would extend south towards the future roundabout. Uh, we, I think it was about three thousand feet is what we came up with in the preliminary analysis, just putting in a signal like it there is today. So, you know, what makes the most sense, because there's probably what, eighteen to twenty thousand cars on White Oak Road. You know, when you introduce a traffic signal, you immediately cut that capacity of that road by fifty to seventy percent because you have to wait for the side street. So, um, that just immediately puts it way over capacity. So you need to extend the four lanes from the area around Timber Drive, I mean, from Timber to Target, to back entrance of Target, Hillendale, and pull that through this intersection. Now, there's a couple of different developments that are proposed in, in the area of the intersection. There's a White Oak Town Home Development, uh, so this was a preliminary plan that the town provided us. So we superimposed that on, on this sheet as well. And then we took the, uh, plans for the Salt Hill Development, uh, kind of down toward the southeast here. And the idea is to, to gain two northbound lanes, uh, probably eight hundred to twelve hundred feet south of the intersection. Gain those two northbound lanes and pull them through the intersection in the same way, southbound, have the two lanes come southbound. And then also then on eastbound Bryan Road to have dual lefts. So that's the key for that intersection when you signalize it, is to be able to essentially double the capacity when you introduce a traffic signal. So that's kind of our recommendation, um, what's needed at this location. I think was mentioned previous meeting is, could this be a bond project? So we came up with about, this about a four million dollar fix to, to really do it correctly. To enter, you know, build a traffic signal, widen it like it needs to be, and then accommodate all the traffic come from Johnston County and all the other traffic that's approved in the area. Of course, you know, this development can't afford to spend four million dollars. Um, I think, uh, some rough estimates that we're looking at. I think some rough estimates that we're looking at, between the, the dedication of the right turn lane, the signal contribution, the design cost, and the frontage widening, the developer's already spending about a thousand, I meant a million bucks as it is now. So that's a lot for 170 lot development. And, and so this would be something that would have to be taken on by the town, or maybe NC DOT Spot Mobility Funds or Division Appropriations. It wouldn't qualify for spot safety money through the signal warrant analysis. We came up with about, I think it was five accidents in the last three years, only one that would be correctable by a traffic signal. Understand your point you're making about, you know, kind of regret waiting till something's too late. And I had, I had the same, obviously, you know, 25, 30 years of experience, I've had that same thing happen to me up in Durham. So it, it is something that you, you don't want to wait so long until something bad happens. So we, I thought this was a good exercise for us to go through and see how much additional pavement will be needed. It's shown in orange, the, the kind of gray is reflective of the widening from Salt Hill Development and then the, the existing pavement that's out there today. So I think if you want to flip to the slide above it.
Slide going to Timber, Timber Drive, so we can see that one.
Yes.
Going up to Timber.
So you have to change your orientation, sorry about that. So northbound will be looking to your, your right on this slide, so.
That's Hillendale intersecting it.
Yeah, there's Hillendale, and then so you see the existing pavement there behind, there's the target, the box down at the bottom. So that's your existing pavement, so you kind of, you see where you pick it up. And I'm, I'm not sure about the status of that Town Home Development there on the west side. Is it?
They've progressed to a certain point in review, but they're now rethinking, they're still interested in the property, but it may convert to single, a single-family proposal.
Okay. So, I mean, if a development in that corner goes forward, then, you know, they would have to do frontage widening, and, and so you could take advantage of that additional pavement. And so you're just kind of stitching together the pavement from developments, they're doing their frontage widening, and then kind of filling in the blanks is kind of the, kind of the bottom line here. But you're trying to get those four through lanes with a median all the way south through the intersection. So this starts from the north. The slide that was on previously is, so now you're going, coming south like that. And then this is kind of where we would start. We're trying to taper it back by the time, I think there's a water feature down there that we're trying to taper back, and you can see some of the widening that the Salt Hill Development was providing through that area there. Yes, so north, north is to the right on this slide.
So we're looking like 4 million or 140,000 as to two price tags? Is that's?
4 million is to really, you know, do it all.
The big project.
Big project, like you would need to do. A standalone traffic signal would, you know, be in that $144,000 range.
Thank you, sir.
The right turn lane that we proffered and, and part of this development was about $79,000, which would, you know, help the situation, help with rear ends, it would kind of give people a little bit of a heads up because they're turning and they could take a, take a gap maybe a little bit sooner.
Can you go down, Mr. Treesenberg, or David, can you go to the previous one that shows the intersection? How far was that lane, the, the right turn lane that, that is required right now, Mr. Overcash? How far was that, would that taper back or taper up to the north? When would it start coming in? How, how many feet is it?
With the existing condition, just adding a southbound right turn lane, we drew it in at about 150 feet of storage and about 100-foot taper, just kind of a standard 250 feet of widening. There is a, some grade, grade issues down to that, on that side, up in the northwest corner, so you got to kind of avoid that. You have to pull for a 45 mile an hour in a road, you would like to pull, you know, the lanes 800 to 1,200 feet south before you drop them at an intersection like this.
So, I can take a question off your time right, while we're right here.
No, no, go right ahead. We're just trying to work.
Is DOT requiring us to do the work on the west side here to get the signal in, or the complete intersection improvement? I mean, I, the notes in here say the southbound and eastbound lanes, and that's what's on the left, I mean, this, I'm not trying to say don't do the thing, but I'm, I'm looking at costs that the town of Garner may have to consider, someone's got to consider doing at least that, but they won't put the, the signal in unless those lanes are improved north from this intersection to the existing pavement right at the Hillendale and Target, correct?
I'd like to qualify that. NC DOT has not reviewed this or approved this. This is the sketch that we did on behalf of the town.
Y'all talked to DOT about the signal, and they said what, yes?
We, we understood that the, that the key issue is the, is the southbound because that's where the backup occurs. But now whether they would approve two lanes, one direction and one lane the other, I, we have not asked that specifically. But it's the southbound that we understood is the major issue because of the backup.
Get somebody else in here again, second time around. Go ahead.
No DOT plan, there's no town plan, there's no timeline, there's no money, there's no intersection improvement. That is how we should consider this development, but there is not going to be any improvement to this intersection. $4 million for us to, and looking at some of these other developments that appear in this vicinity, it, it seems like as part of our retreat, we need to get a handle and get this information, more comprehensive and holistic look at this area, on what the growth is going to be like out there. There's already a lot of approved developments, Mr. Singleton mentioned, even without this development, we've got really bad traffic problems. And the first solution to a traffic problem is not to throw more traffic at it, is to come up with a plan. So this is all, looks good, but it's not even close to being a reality.
The developer is proposing about $85,000 towards the intersection currently, as with the development. Seventy-nine for the turn lane.
$4 million.
I, I understand that.
Okay, I'm just context.
I'm not aware of the, you know.
I'm just, and, and, but I, I think again, with all the development that's going, already there and approved and under construction, and other ones that are, are coming through, planning as we kind of speak, we've got to, Mr. Singleton says, we've got to sort of prioritize the projects in this area. And.
And along the frontage of this site, about $800,000 worth of improvements to Bryan Road. So that's, that's.
Let me bring Mr. Vance into the conversation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reference to, Mr. Overcash, in reference to the improvements here, I would just want to make clarify, clarify my understanding, there will need to be studies done, environmental studies done.
Of course.
To.
Survey, environmental studies, the whole process.
Right. And we, and repeating, we, a, a traffic signal is warranted, okay? And whether this, hypothetically, whether this development goes in or not, traffic is still going to increase. It's, it's still going to be an increase of traffic no matter what, what happens with this particular development, okay? Which means that the, that the, that the problem is still going to be there, it's going to, it potentially will be worsened because of the increase in traffic, which shows, which provides evidence that improvements on White Oak Road are necessary. And, and from what I'm hearing is that DOT is not going to, doesn't look at secondary roads very favorably when it comes to scoring well. So all the funding for doing this is going to fall on the town to do. The estimate that you have, if, if, you, you have some nap?
It, it's possible they, they could fund, partially fund or fund this location. It's, it would just have to be scored against other, other sites.
Right, which would take, which would take time.
Yes, sir.
Probably a significant amount of time. And leading to, leading to this, to say that whether we do anything or not, traffic is going to increase. And, and the, the choke point is that Bryan Road, White Oak, White Oak intersection here for those improvements. And I'm inclined to say that we need to look at more of how we can improve this, have a plan in place to improve this because we already know that it's going to increase, it's going to get worse. It is, it is a, a major choke point for us in this, in the town region. So I, I believe that my theory that we need to study this more from a, from a, from a White Oak, White Oak Bryan Road to see what can be done there, because it's going to get worse as time goes in, goes by anyway. So what can be done there? And to, and to hold up other development because of what Johnston County and other areas are doing, brings me, I, I have concerns about that, to punish our growth because of what others are doing in other, other areas, which, 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 which means that I believe we have to look at what can be done here to continue on with the positive growth that we're having. And, and simultaneously, look at, look at, look at the safety piece, and knowing that we may not get the support we need from NC DOT to, to facilitate this, and knowing that dealing with DOT takes time and effort to get it done, and get it scheduled and get it moving. Long story short, I believe that we need to look at this a little bit closer and provide, provide more information relative to what can be done here at this, at this intersection. And would you say your cost estimate is pretty accurate?
Based on GIS information, that's probably as accurate as we can get at this level of, of planning.
Okay, so as, as you get, one more question, as you get deeper into the planning and design, you have to give verticals and horizontals to get it clearer?
Sorry, it, it could go up or down.
Up and down.
Certainly, certainly, yes. I mean, they have a contingency built in, so when you're doing planning level cost estimates, you kind of, you know, put that contingency in just, just in case. The right turn lane that we've committed to would be kind of like a, a first step in this widening. So, you know, we, we wouldn't want to commit to building anything that was going to go to waste. That was kind of the main objective there is, you know, we build southbound right turn lane, obviously that pavement would be reused and be.
And, and in this environment, is it safe to say that costs, that the cost of materials is going up?
Yes, sir, inflation is driving everything up.
Right, go ahead. Thank you. All right, I want to give everybody a chance. I think Ms. Behringer, do you have anything else?
Not really anything to add, except that I, I agree that we've got to find a solution because it's, we're not going to not grow. You know, we're not going to have less traffic. It, it's going to be, become a bigger problem, and we have an opportunity now to explore and see, and find out who we can pull in as funding partners, or what, what the, there may be things out there that we haven't seen yet that can be drawn into this to help, help get this project, get the road improvements done so that we can get this development and other developments along the road. So I, I would be in favor of whatever form it takes, of doing some more exploring, intense exploring to find out how we can get this done.
Okay, counsel, you know, I give you some more time to explore other concerns, but I think I'm hearing a, a general theme here from counsel as it relates to the, okay, Mr. Barter, I think it wants to speak out there, but a concern about the issue surrounding the road and the road access. We'll hear from Mr. Barter, I believe, at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. And counsel for hearing us tonight. I just like to say from hearing all the comments up here, it sounds like this probably needs a little bit of breathing room, and maybe the best, you know, path is, you know, deferring any vote and give you some time to think about all these things that have come up. They're all legitimate, you know, concepts and concerns, you know, for the community, and we have the same shared concern. One of the reasons we did this preliminary plan at our cost and about $15,000 was, you know, to express our interest in being part of the solution. So that's still the case. We'd love to, you know, give it a little bit of breathing room if that's, you know, what the best thing is here for, you know, for some discussion about how to get this on a path towards, you know, approval. You know, that, if, if that intersection improvement is the one that drives it, you know, maybe it even becomes a zoning condition, you know, that, those improvements have to be satisfactorily applied, whatever the definition of that's going to be, before Cofos can be had. So work could start on it when DOT work or, or town work started on that intersection and move it on a path, you know, with knowing that the result is going to be, you know, improvements in place to, for public safety and congestion management. So I just put that out there as the developer and owner, and appreciate everybody's, you know, thoughts tonight and comments on it. I think they're all good comments, you know, and legitimate concerns, you know, as we, you know, look at the area, you know, where we feel like, you know, it's our responsibility, but we've been here a long time, it's our responsibility to be good citizens of Garner. So we will follow your lead.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any question, Mr. Barter, while he's here? Ms. Behringer?
I don't have a question of Mr. Barter per se, but as we look at South Garner High School, just down the road from there, we're, we're getting to the point where we're going to have a lot of kids driving. It started out with freshman and sophomore classes, now those guys are juniors and seniors, and they're going to add to the traffic. So this is not just a, this particular developer's wish to develop a, attract and create more traffic, but that high school is going to create more traffic. Kids, as soon as school is out, they're going to make a beeline to the closest source of food, and that's going to be at White Oak. So that's, if that's possible, that we could talk to DOT about that, then we need to just look at all the possibilities as far as getting help, whoever and however.
One quick comment to Mr. Barter. I just want to say, you know, I appreciate your approach and understanding the safety issues and the community issues, and I think you're, it models the right approach for looking at development, and I hope other developers, as we look in this area, can look at the lead you're taking on being a contributor to the community and solving these problems and, and get on board with that as well. So thank you for that.
Just may if I may add also, Mr. Barter, to, to Kimberly Horn, and providing these, are these conceptual preliminary? Conceptual? Conceptual plans? I just want to be sure, that, this is what step we're ahead here. Helps, helped tremendously in, in the thought process and decision-making. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barter. Good to see you. And, yeah, I appreciate your comments and desire to work through this in a reasonable fashion. Counsel, there would seem to be a, a couple, two or three options. Some of you have seen the information discussed with our town attorney, but if you see a need to have further questions answered by either our town staff or the developer, I'm open to that. But if you're ready to take an action that you think is most appropriate this time, I'm, I'm willing to hear from you. Mr. Matthews?
Just a quick comment. I think we've brought a whole lot, and Mr. Barter, I certainly appreciate your approach on this. And bottom line, as we've all agreed to, is a lot of growth coming up out there, and we can't let this, this one intersection stop everything going in eastern Wake County. So ever how we need to do this, we need to really push this thing from staff level to board level to wherever we need to go to make this thing a priority and get it fixed because it ain't going to get any better out there, as Gray said. And the quicker we can fix this, whether it be a town takes part of it, state takes part of it, or how we need to go about it, but it impacts all of us. So as fast as we can move on and get this intersection straightened out, because there's more growth coming, we can't have this conversation every time.
Ms. Singleton, go ahead.
Couple things. One is on Mr. Dill, just concerned about the, the grading into those lots on Twinberry, the seven lots. And Ms. Forters said, I believe that they were not going to be a part of it. Well, just make that a condition, then you don't have to worry about it. That one's, that one to me is takes care of that, will be simple for those seven homes. Let's remember here, as we sit here and go, oh my God, it's $4 million, and I don't want to pay $4 million either, but we sure ain't blink to spend the four and a half million dollars to Wyden Jones sausage road. And, and where's that road going? It gets on, and where does it come to? The intersection of White Oak and Timber. Come on now, let's remember this, and we talk about being safe, and that's a dangerous, we know how dangerous going over the S curve of the railroad track is, but that's, a lot of those cars, because I get it on many afternoons trying to miss the 40 traffic, is coming up the back, coming up backways. But a lot of that traffic goes forward, gets there at White Oak and Timber, excuse me, White Oak, Jones sausage, and 70. And thank God we made those improvements a few years ago. What would be the level of service at that intersection if the town of Garner had not stepped forward and got a, got a tiger grant for half of it? What would the level of service be out there if we had not made those improvements? It'd be horrible. It's horrible to have some people now. It would be bad. So just remember where this train keeps going, it's going Jones sausage, it'll be wide, and you're going to have more traffic going on the road, and you've got more traffic going here. It's going to go right toward this. It's going to go right toward this intersection. And I know you're saying we can't let one intersection slow down progress. Damned if you can't. Sometimes you just have to say, hey, it's the time to get a plan together. We ain't got a plan. We don't know the cost. We don't know if we just have to improve part of this. We don't have to ruin all of it. We don't know. That's what we got to do. And I think as we look forward and I appreciate Mr. Barter's comments is that either we table this, table this or continue it until January, February, where maybe staff can get a definite answer on what DOT may say we would have to do to get the signal installed. I think that's what we need to focus on is to see if we can get at least, what do we have to do to get the signal installed, the improvements that they're going to require us to make? East side, west side, northbound, southbound, whatever bound it be. We can't move forward until we know those answers. And that, the answers may not come in a month or two months, it may take six months. But we need to get those answers. And I could think we should either, whatever Ms. Jones recommends, table it or continue it to a further meeting so we can move forward. I don't think we want to vote on something and deny it and have to wait six months or a year before you come back. I don't think we want to do that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Porter?
Just wanted to, um, come up and say, we do appreciate your comments and thank you for just not voting no. Um, this has been good discussion. I did want to mention that part of my presentation was about the drainage issues and I, I can speak about that tonight or we can wait until January, February. It, it's up to you all, um.
Please go ahead.
Okay.
Y'all have tried to address those.
Sure, no, I appreciate it because I don't want that, you know, that to get forgotten about. Um, can you pull up the presentation? We'll just skip to those slides. Thank you. All right, so we are looking for the map that says Mahler's Creek, Twinberry Lane, adjacent property owners. So keep scrolling. It's af, it's after that green slide. Oh, there it is. Thank you. All right, let me get my notes. So, um, thanks again. And I've got, um, Dan McCully with Hart and Hickman here, who, um, is the, the environmental scientist who went out and met with, um, one of the neighbors. So I'll just give you a quick overview of what, what we discussed and, um, the outcome of our Zoom call. So we had a call on, uh, September twenty second with a couple of the neighbors. And prior to this, we had Dan McCully with Hart and Hickman meet, um, Roger Thomas out onsite to just kind of look at the situation, get his eyes on it in the field to see what was going on. And, um, the, the general consensus as, which was mentioned earlier, is that there is a stream which you can see kind of goes through lots one, two, three, four, five, six, and kind of clips a corner of seven. Um, probably should have had a buffer on it. And it was not a buffered stream, which is why there's lots and street that are developed in that area. Um, there is not a whole lot that we can do about that. It's built on, you know, it, it's unfortunate that that didn't have a buffer on it, but it is what it is. Um, so what we decided or discussed during the call, if you can go to the next slide, David, sorry, there's a couple, there's a couple of slides. So this is, um, just a map of the existing conditions now. So there's those seven lots that are on Twinberry and then, um, our development to the north. Right now, there is just under five acres of drainage that go towards those lots. Those lots, um, cumulatively contribute two point four three acres of drainage to, um, to the, the drainage situation. Next slide. And this is the, the post, um, development grading and Councilman Behringer, as you can see, there is no grading in that twenty-five feet, um, behind those lots. I just wanted to mention that there is grading on here so it actually can show that we're, and we, we could make that a commitment, I think that'd be fine. But the post, the post, uh, development drainage is, there's about, now we've reduced it from the, just under four acre, or just under five acres to one point two five acre. So we've significantly reduced the drainage area. Um, those seven lots are still contributing the same two point four three because they're existing, they're not going to change. Um, so just by development alone, we're reducing it by, you know, three acres or so, which is a significant reduction in drainage. And it's because of the way the lots are graded, the fact that we're introducing curb and guttered roads and the drainage all gets carried to the stormwater pond. So, um, just by design only, uh, we're, we're significantly improving the situation. And again, since we're keeping the grading out of the twenty-five feet, it helps to slow any additional runoff from just going down and, um, getting into those lots as it would if it was just like a flat grassy area. Um, one of the, the, uh, solutions we did discuss and we did, um, Carlton, who's on the call too, I'm, I'm sure he can hear me, uh, he did some preliminary, uh, oh, hello, there you are. He did some, uh, preliminary design work for a, an option that would, it'd be paid for by the residents if they wanted to pursue it. But, um, that drainage could be piped. And it, I mean, it would take major construction, digging up yards, putting in inlets, and Carlton can speak more to that. But, um, you know, we did some preliminary design and we would, we would help more with design if the neighbors decided they wanted to do that solution. Um, but it's, it's pretty invasive and it's offsite. So I think that just by, just by design, we're, we're improving the situation a lot. And, um, after our call, it seemed like showing these graphics that the neighbors, um, were appreciative that we had these graphics and we were able to show that we were going to improve the situation. Um, so we had our Zoom call and it, it seemed to end pretty well. I mean, obviously in a perfect world, we'd like to get rid of all the drainage issues, but we can't because the world is far from perfect. But we're, we are, um, improving it greatly just by how the, the subdivision is being designed. Um, and again, if they did decide they wanted to pursue a piping option, um, we could assist further with design of that pipe. But again, that'd be at a cost to those neighbors. So I just wanted to, because I didn't want to get this issue swept under the rug again because I know the traffic's kind of a biggie, um, wanted to go over that and see if you all had any questions, um, regarding this particular issue.
Okay.
Point of clarification, because I'm, I'm making an assumption and I know what that leads to. The existing drainage, that, the two point three acres is basically, um, starting from lot seven, working down to lot one as slope stands. That's, well, that's the existing drainage.
Right, so it's the, the point six six plus point one, or one plus point seven seven. So all those three areas, and Carlton can speak, um, in more detail about the different areas of drainage, of concentration of waters flowing if you wanted him to. But essentially, yeah, that two point four three is those seven lots and that remains unchanged between existing and proposed conditions.
Okay, any other questions, uh, council on this issue? Drainage? Okay, hearing none, um.
Let's see, I have one question. In reference to what you're proposing here with the, um, with the drainage, uh, how was that received by the, by the residents? By Roger Thomas? He was there, you said?
Rogers Thomas was, um, was on the call. We had a couple of neighbors on the call and, um, you know, they would like to see the situation go away completely. I mean, I can totally understand that. But they seemed, um, now that we had graphics to show them, they seemed to, um, better understand what we were proposing and they were more comfortable with it. Um, it's, it's a tough situation when there's a stream that is not buffered and it gets developed that causes all sorts of issues. And, um, you know, there's, it stinks. You know, their houses are right on that stream or their backyards, which is why the, the drainage issue is exacerbated. But, um, you know, at the end of the call, the neighbors seemed to, um, the, the information was well received and, and they seemed to be happier with what we were doing. Again, they'd like it to go away, but, um, they, they seemed to be happy that we were contributing this just by design and really helping the, the problem as much as we could.
Okay, anything else for Ms. Porter? Bringing this to our team.
All right, thank you. I just, again, thank you for letting me explain that before we forgot about it.
Sure, thanks very much. Um, Jeff, David, anything further here? I, I'm, I'm thinking we're moving toward a continuance. That's been essentially suggested, but I'm trying to preempt any meaningful discussion further. We've been at it for a while, but, uh, anything further here? Nothing, David, nothing, Jeff. Okay. Well, I appreciate the comments of everyone. Uh, council, um, it's your decision regarding, uh, movement, uh, from beyond where we are. I don't sense that there's any consensus, uh, to, to approve anything or approve anything this evening. I think we're trying to avoid a situation where we have to, uh, take action that brings this back, what, six months later or whatever.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
And you redirect it or how? Uh, sound like we're all on the same sheet of music here and we're trying to do what's right, uh, both in every area. If we table this or whatever we decide to do tonight, uh, to give staff time to come up some things, do, do we have any kind of tentative timeline that we can get some feedback? Do you think that we can see where we're at on this thing from the state or whom or goes? It's not only this project, it's everything else, uh, how quick we can get something on it and where.
Matthews, I, I think we would probably need a minimum of three months to be able to, to, to get some information together and try to get DOT to review it that, that, like everyone else, they're busy, designers are busy. And just the work that we've already got pending with DOT, trying to get responses from them, uh, my, my guess would be that, that it would not be sooner than three months before we would have anything definitive to be able to bring back. Um, we can keep council updated and, you know, as we go along with that work, but it could be that you could, you could choose to make a deferment or, or however Ms. Jones directs you to tonight that is, um, open-ended, um, and does not have a specific meeting date in mind and, and maybe conditioned on us getting sufficient information from DOT.
I think that's what we're looking, that's what I'm hearing, everybody. Okay.
With the holiday season coming in, things going to maybe more difficulty information. So is, is that included in the three, the three, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but is that included in the three-month timeframe?
The three months is just that we think of very minimum amount of time that it would take to get some preliminary work done and reviewed. It, it could take longer than that, but, um, again, it just, it just depends on workload and, and lots of factors.
Let me make a suggestion then. Uh, I think Ms. Jones recommended we can continue it, but we should, uh, provide a specific date and time in the motion. And three months is in the March, our second, the second meeting that month, I believe is the fifteenth. And if there's no, if staff knows before, you know, a week before that, we're not going to, uh, have that information. They can let us know. They can let the applicant know and say, you know, maybe we have just an agenda item to continue it for another thirty days or however much time staff thinks they need to add if, as a continuance. Is that reasonable or unreasonable?
So if you continue it to a date and time certain, then there does not need to be additional public advertising. But I, I'll defer to planning, but I don't think that we have significant cost at this stage in the process, um, with doing any public notice that would be required.
That's correct, there'd be no significant cost.
Um, the minimum time.
Right, so we, we would have to provide the minimum time, but if, if you don't pick a date certain, then perhaps there's more flexibility to get it on your agenda when the answers are available.
Don't pick a date specific is what you just said, correct?
All, all that does is add the notice time. So once we know we have the information, we then can just calendar that for the next meeting where there's appropriate time for public notice. So, um, it, it's, I think that's the, what Ms. Jones is saying, it's not going to cost significantly in time or dollars.
I would just observe very quickly, and this maybe goes without saying, but, uh, yeah, I think the, the idea of the continuance and maybe leaving a little indefinite is good. We also, I think, need to be sensitive to the developer in the lost time, uh, as well. So, um, I think, uh, as soon as it's reasonable that we can, uh, bring this back, we ought to try to do it that way. So there's been a suggestion of, you said three months?
She said to leave it open-ended, so, correct?
Right, that's my understanding, that staff would, would be able to be more flexible with the schedule then, than perhaps having an artificial deadline that's not realistic.
Feedback, Ms. Behringer, Mr. Dunbar, see if they're okay with this?
It sounds good to me. I would just like to, to have some way of just having, uh, regular updates from staff about, you know, how quickly it's happening. I want it done correctly, but I, I do want it to proceed, so.
My only comment is making sure we, we, during our retreat, start looking at this entire area because it is going to hold up a lot of stuff in the area. So I think it's good that we get on this as soon as possible so that other development can occur as well, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we continue, uh, this conditional, uh, zoning, uh, CZPD two O dash O two and, uh, to a future date, uh, when staff has gathered the information with NCDOT sometime in twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, um, okay, you don't think that's too open-ended or should we try to put a target date or, Ms. Attorney, you have any thoughts on that?
I think you can certainly instruct staff to give you updates on whether you want them in three months or each month, you know, as information becomes available. But it, it's important to bring it back when all the information is available, um, so that you can make a decision at that point.
I'll add to the motion that staff will update us when they get some additional information that will be helpful in moving forward with this particular agenda item and that intersection.
Yeah, I think that's helpful.
Second.
You second it, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, any further questions, comments? All right, we have a motion properly before us made by Mr. Singleton, second of Ms. Matthews. Then it's manned with staff updates and so the exact date will, will be determined in the future. All right, if you favor the, uh, the motion, council, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you, uh, don't approve this, uh, motion, vote no. Council has voted unanimously, uh, in favor of this action. Um, and I would just say to, uh, our staff and of course also to the developer that I think hopefully everybody here is interested in helping this process move forward as quickly as we can. It's a good project in many ways, but traffic issues are not new to our town, unfortunately. And, uh, so this is one example of the concerns that citizens raise to us and we have other spots as well that, uh, this is an issue. So perhaps this is the best way to work through this particular issue and get it back before us in a more favorable fashion. Thank you all for the time you've taken to be with us here this evening, so.
Thank you for addressing the drainage issues and addressing the concerns Mr. Dillinger had on the, uh, uh, grading issues, on particularly on those seven lots.
Okay, thank you again, we appreciate it, yeah. Have nice holidays, we hope.
Thank you so much.
Okay, sure. Um, council, we're still away from, uh, our scheduled recess and I think we can probably get this several other manners here, um, before we do. So, um, the next item of business, I believe, is committee reports. Um, no one has made me aware of any, but are there any from council, any committees at all? Okay, none. Um, Mr. Manager, I recognize you, sir, for managing reports.
See, all I have, Mr. Mayor, town council for tonight are the two that are in the packet here.
Yeah.
Not sure if staff has anything else. Uh, okay, um, so we just have those two standard reports there if you have any questions.
Question for the manager, council, anybody? All right, I believe there are none. And, um, attorney, Ms. Attorney, anything?
No report tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, council comments, uh, this time. I'll start, uh, with Ms. Behringer to my right.
A few weeks ago, we, um, mentioned that there's a need for the tennis courts on create, showed to be resurf, the parking lot to be resurfaced. And do we have an update or report on that?
Yeah, I reported that to, um, Public Works and they looked at it and will make it part of a plan to resurface, but they don't have a exact date for it yet. Um, we do have some of those things like in our, um, perform, but just have not identified the funding source for those, some of those projects yet, so.
I have one other thing. I noticed that apparently Public Works has a, I believe it's called a grinder and they're evening the, the, uh, height differences on the sidewalk blocks all around town. And it's, uh, at, at first it looked like, uh, repairs, but now I understand that it's just making it level so people aren't at risk of falling and it's good to see that.
That's a, um, that's a contract we have with a contractor that goes around and, um, does an assessment of sidewalks. And they started off with a certain, a couple of sections in town and they'll do those and then in coming years, we'll, we'll make that a regular part of our maintenance.
We have them on Garner Road quite a few, so, thank you.
That it? Mr. Singleton, I recognize you, sir.
And that, that was a pilot program we did to shoot into budget, was it not?
Yes, correct.
Because when you drive by and see it, it's like they got some giant shopbacks out there and giant forty-gallon trashcans. I mean, when I rode by, I said, that's the biggest shopback I've seen in a while. Till I noticed he was grinding and what he was doing and it had the vacuum system.
Right, it's got a, uh...
That pilot program. That pilot program.
A concrete blade, and it basically cuts sideways as they swing it around, and it eddies, yeah.
But it's that pilot program that we did, and you know, Ms. Behringer spoke about, I saw him out there working one day, and I'm glad that's something that we had, that we'd done. I know it's a lot easier doing that than going out and clearing out a 12-foot section and correcting two humps, if basically you've got just one issue.
Right.
I know the one up here they had to fix, because I saw them where they worked on that, I had some, I think, serious, some more root damage, but I do appreciate them doing that. I had something else that I forgot.
Okay, you might think of what we go, so Mr. Dillinger, I recognize you, sir.
I just want to commend staff and Parks and Rec and everyone on the block party over the weekend, that was fun. We got out there a little bit later around four, but people were having a lot of fun. It was a big success, I think. Another question is at our next meeting, or I guess you can email it to us, Mr. Town Manager, have we gotten any of the additional tax information on property tax and real estate tax as we get sort of closer to budget time? I'm curious what those, what that's come in at, has that come in yet?
Like a more of a revenue projection on what some of the actuals are?
Yeah, has that come in yet?
Mr. Beck.
Are you asking about the tax-based projections for the next fiscal year, or the next tax year, I guess?
The collection from last year into this year.
Are we doing collections?
Yeah, it's, so over the next few weeks is when the bulk of those are collected. We run pretty busy through, I think January 5th is the, the date to pay before interest starts, so the next several weeks are really busy at the pay window, so have a better idea of that after, you know, mid-January or so.
And from Wake County as well, from Park, Roger Lorm?
Yeah, so, so we collect, it's really busy here with people coming in to pay, but also Wake County remits what they collect on our behalf to us weekly, and so we get weekly reports on that and a monthly recap. So it'll be busy for them too, just like it is here through, you know, first week or so of January, and then we'll have a really good idea of where we stand, you know, compared year to year to last year as well.
That's what, thank you.
Okay, then, Ms. Vance?
Well, I would like to say that if I had, had mentioned the opening of the museum, it's a really opening. If you haven't seen it, I would recommend go ahead, take a look at the Garner Museum at the depot, go out there, and I wasn't able to make the block party, but I heard that a lot of folks had a lot of fun, and that's, that's a good, good thing in my mind, realizing that we haven't had a parade in a number of years for a number of different reasons, just to have a block party, get folks out, to have, to have a positive influence and to celebrate the season, I think was a great opportunity. And to the town manager and to the staff, thank you for your quick response on the dumping of trash on Crete Road and working hard to try and to get that, that cleared up. Long story short, on Crete Road, it appears that someone dumped a lot of trash in one area, in one area, and we're looking into how that could be cleared up and, and who the culprits were in doing that. And December 6th, tomorrow's December 7th, let us remember Pearl Harbor. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And tomorrow will be 80 years.
80 years, wow.
And there's still, there's still some survivors of that from 80 years ago.
And I'd like to add to, at the Veterans event that was held at first, not first, but Avery's Borough, there was a gentleman who was a part of the, of the Pacific Theater during World War II who pushed his walker down, and it was a pleasure to see him, because they are getting fewer, fewer and fewer.
Thanks, sir, thanks, sir. Mr. Matthews?
And I saw, on the trash, I saw the pile today, and I called, and Mr. Beasley had already told me you'd already contacted them, and they'd contacted DOT, so some of them were right away in Wake County, but somebody, it looks like, took a dump truck and just backed up in that little driveway and dumped it. It's, it's a big pile of trash, I'm not, it's a big pile of trash. You can't miss it in the daylight. I went by there at night and didn't see it, but you can't miss it in the daylight.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, what do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to add to my colleague's fellow veteran colleague over there, by the way, it's, that was very meaningful, and we've got the wall coming, the wall heels the first of the year, and the Veterans Committee is already working heavy on that, we're putting teams together for security. It's going to be tremendous, unlike it's been before, and so that's coming. Also, the, the big downtown get-together was fun, I enjoyed riding on our commuter rail with Ms. Behringer, and I was photo, and I told my daughter, she was FaceTiming, I said, we now have a low-budget commuter rail in Garner, but we're getting there. I said, stand by, I got to stop for it, and here it come by, and it was, it was a hood anyway.
Boy, I missed that. I'd like to see those pictures.
They got video, so they do have videos.
Looking for that a long time, haven't we, Jim?
But the people of Garner realizing we're starting to do so much more and more, and it's great to see the crowds turn out and all the efforts put into it, and it's starting to really pay off. And the final thing, we procured three houses at Avery Street and Old Garner Road. When are we going to do something with those? And the Garner Fire Department would love to do some test burns in there also, three houses would be a bonus for them, so where are we at with that?
Yeah, Public Works is working on that, they're doing assessments for asbestos at this stage right now, but they're looking at getting those down pretty soon. I'm not sure about the viability of the fire department burning them, a lot of things go into that, but they are working actively to get rid of those.
Okay, it's good training for them, you know, they did a brick house up here on Avery's Borough Road.
We partner with them when we can, but it's not always feasible to do it, depending on.
Three hours of bonus, as quick as we can get rid of them, that'd be great. Thank you, Mr., that's all I have.
Mr. Matthews, I will say that when, when Mr. Jones did an initial assessment of those, the location of some power lines and the proximity to the street, his initial assessment that was that they might not make as good a training opportunity as some of the other ones that we've had, but we'll follow up, but I do believe we've got two or three reasons there that may cause some less-than-optimal situation.
I understand, no problem. As long as we can get them down, that'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you, and so, just a couple of things from the mayor. Obviously, in the cycle with the reelection, committee assignments will be considered by the mayor, sometimes those can carry over with the same persons, but if you as a council member have any thoughts, I'll hear from you, not tonight, but you can get in touch with me about any change in committee assignments. I think our committees have functioned pretty well, but I'll try to hear what your thoughts are in that regard going forward, over the course of the next few weeks or month, I guess. Our Parks and Rec Director is, is with us this evening, I want to commend her and her staff for all the good comments I'm hearing about the Christmas efforts that are going on, I've been part of some of those, I was out of town for this last one. Also, I believe I saw, just in an email published, publication today, an awarded for youth sports and play grant, I believe, that's always nice to hear. Also, I heard some, I guess, some grants coming to our senior center, I believe, as well. So all those are very positive things for our town, I think, and thank you.
Quick progress, your staff has been very good.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I'd like to just reiterate something I said, I guess, back at the front of the meeting, and that is, it was nice to be able to certify results from our recent election, particularly the bond issues, and I want to publicly thank again our citizens for the very positive vote there. Your governing body is intent on using those well and wisely, and you'll be hearing more about those in the not-too-distant future, particularly as the council comes together for a, a retreat and have some further discussion about priorities and those kinds of things. So thanks for your support. With that, that's all I have, and I believe we have a closed-session manner we need to do at this time, so I'll entertain a motion. I think I had the site somewhere, but the attorney can provide it for us, who will make that motion.
Mayor moves that we go into a closed session for a real estate item, statute 14331811, subset A, subset 5.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Matthews, I believe, so all in favor of the motion for closed session, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's five of nine, I'd be willing for us to take a quick break and come back and discuss this matter, is that suitable? Counsel, okay, I'll declare that we're in closed session with a recess preceding it. I'll declare that, uh, we're in closed session with a recess preceding it.
...